I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is invitation for a citizen to schedule time on a commission agenda for item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. Nobody signed in today. Item number four is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any additions, corrections? Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five is employee anniversary recognitions. We have a couple this morning. Commissioner Hostler?
This certificate of appreciation is presented to Abby Talbert on this day, twentieth of August, two thousand twenty-four, by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of five years of dedicated exceptional service to the Brookings County State's Attorney's Office. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sam? This certificate of appreciation is presented to Samantha Kruger on this twentieth day of August, two thousand twenty-four, by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of five years of dedicated exceptional service to the Brookings County Sheriff's Office. Congratulations.
Next, we have the consent agenda items, which includes the minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and a human services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additions, corrections, comments? Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number seven is routine business. Is approval of the claims. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B on the agenda is department head reports. Mr. Hill from the planning office.
Good morning. The, uh, this month, we've been putting articles in the Brookings Register on every Thursday. We want to thank them for our public outreach and allowing us to, uh, put out our, our emergency management message out to the, to the public like that. That, we really appreciate that. We had a PPCC pod meeting on August the eighth over at the Brookings Hospital. Had a drainage meeting on August the ninth. It was a, a public meeting conducted over at the BCOAC. And I, next month, I would like to request that the county commission meet as the Drainage Board to discuss the results of that report and, and give my office guidance on how to move forward. It's up to the commission on, and commission assistant, of course, on which meeting it is, but just notify me which meeting you wanna, wanna discuss it at, and we can prepare the paperwork for it. Uh, the LEPC meeting was held at the East Fire Station on August the fifteenth. August the sixteenth, the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management, Region Six coordinated visitor our office. In your packet today, I had a travel request for myself to go to Pierre on August twenty-ninth. I was notified during that meeting that Richard needs to come with me to satisfy our requirements for local emergency planning grant that we get. So with your permission, I'd like to add Richard to that travel request that you approved today.
Is that okay? Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, thank you. Uh, later on, we got a safety committee meeting tomorrow for the county. On Thursday, the city of Brookings is looking at the new pre-disaster mitigation plan, which this board will review later, later in the year. And I'm gonna meet with the city of Brookings and First Planning District on that particular thing. We do have a tabletop exercise being conducted in Aurora on August twenty-seventh, if any of the commissioners want to attend. Tabletop's a good way to get your feet wet in the emergency management world because it's, uh, no fault, no blame. You just, uh, put out the scenarios and discuss what, what could happen in the future and what plans you need to start figuring out to do and all that. That's August twenty-seventh. August twenty-eighth, uh, we've got a new senior living facility opening up, Peaceful Pines. They requested my office come over and do a walkthrough with them, which this is normal practice. I've been through, uh, United Living Community and a couple other ones at their request. Uh, once again, August twenty-ninth, I will be in Pierre all day for, uh, called a salamander course. And, uh, other than that, that's all I have. Any questions from the board?
Any questions for Bob? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do you have a report from sheriffs? Bob?
Good morning. Uh, jail, we're sitting right up around the sixty mark there. Um, about fifty percent of our holds are out of county. Uh, the most of those being the marshals. We're sitting about ten right now. Um, intakes, um, so far this year, we're averaging about a hundred and forty-eight to a hundred and fifty-two intakes a month. Um, that's about, summer months, you, mainly July, you'll see that, uh, the numbers will go up. Um, nice weather, everybody's getting out and, and, uh, things are active on the interstates themselves there. Um, twenty-four, seven, running about average there. Hundred and forty-eight participants. Uh, GPS accounts are up. We're sitting about nine. Um, two of those being juveniles themselves. Uh, pretty much everything's pre-trial on that. We do have, I think, three on GPS right now for, uh, work releases, sending out sentences, and no out-of-county GPS there. Um, things are running about the same as compared to the other months through there. Um, juvenile holdover last week, heard from John Stewart out at the state. Um, been waiting on, get some answers and clarifications for training for our COs to be compliance with the state for beings that were deemed rural exception, which is a twenty-four to forty-eight hour holdover. Uh, the state really doesn't have anything outlined for us in that position to have trained COs in different areas. So the, uh, he's accepted that our, that the training that we do for our COs for adult capacity, as long as we have some of those trainings that do reflect mostly on juveniles, um, we'll just send him a list of all the trainings that we do, and they'll put that on in our file there. Um, getting everything sent off to them, uh, the, after it is accepted on their end at the board, then it's just, uh, signing on the dotted line and agreeing to the two inspections a year, keeping everybody up with their trainings, and, uh, only using the, the couple rooms that we have just for the, the holdover should we need them. Took a long time to get to that part, so I, it's kind of a new area for, for, um, John and his team now. Uh, they've had quite a bit of turnover out there and some different jobs and, and stuff going, so we're glad to have that part done and, and know a direction. So we hope by first of next month, we'll get the final answer and get the paperwork going. Questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we do, we have a weed and pest report document. As you can read through that from the weed department, uh, no other departments. Move on to the finance officers' report for July. Uh, there's be it noted items. Auditor's account with the treasurer, payroll and additive totals, highway expenditure report, registered deed statement of fees collected. Noted items. We do have a scheduled nine o'clock, so we'll move on down to regular business. Item number nine, letter A is action to, uh, to approve resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-one. A resolution authorizing the purchase of bulk road salt, ASTM one GR one, based upon the price established through the state of South Dakota Department of Transportation bid process. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-two, a plat of lot one, Peterson addition to the southeast quarter of section sixteen, township one eleven north, range forty-eight west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion and second. Comments?
This was heard on our August the sixth regular planning commission meeting and approved unanimously and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-three, a plat of tract one, Arlington substation addition to the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section thirteen, township one twelve north, range fifty-two west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Comments?
Once again, we heard this on August the sixth, passed it unanimously and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-four, a plat of lot one of the black addition in the east half of the southeast quarter of section nineteen, township one ten north, range forty-eight west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Comments?
Heard this one on the August sixth commission meeting, planning commission meeting, and you passed unanimously and sent to this board with a recommendation that you approve it.
Okay. Any questions?
About, is there two houses on this pri, I mean, there's one house I see on lot one, and then is there a house just to the, to, to the right of it, northeast, I guess, as, as it lays?
I believe there is, sir.
Okay. And so there's two, two separate residences, but then it's platted separately, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action approved agreement number twenty-four dash sixty-nine, a state of South Dakota Department of Public Safety Office of Emergency Management, two thousand twenty-five, local emergency management performance grant. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Comments?
This is our yearly, um, federal grant from the, it's administered by the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management. It comes from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and it does provide for up to fifty percent of the salary and benefits paid to the emergency manager, and in this case, our deputy emergency manager.
Okay. Any comments for Bob? Questions? Call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Action approved agreement number twenty-four dash seventy, an application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Windsor Township. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item G, action approved agreement number twenty-four dash seventy-one, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Madera Township. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item H, action to approve agreement twenty, number twenty-four dash seventy-two, uh, application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highway made by Brookings Municipal Utilities in Aurora Township. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item I, action to approve the low bid for structure and approach grading of structure, zero-six dash two-two-seven dash two-thirty, PCN oh-eight F three, to Timmins Construction of Brookings, South Dakota, in an amount of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments?
Colin is here with Banner if you have questions or if he has comments.
Okay. Comments, Colin, on just?
I don't have any comments. Uh, Brian asked me to show up in case you guys had any questions. Um, we had the bid opening here two weeks ago. We received eight bids for this project. Um, they were all fairly well. Timmins came in as a low bid. Um, Timmins does not have experience doing a box cover yet, but we feel they are competent and capable of doing it, and we'd recommend that we proceed with awarding the low bid to them, so.
Okay. What's, uh, location on this?
This is on Township Road, um, two-nineteenth Street, southeast of Aurora.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item J is action approved, the low bid for structure and approach grading of structure, oh-six dash two-eighty, one-seventy-two, PCN oh-eight F four, to Holloway Construction of Parker, South Dakota, in the amount of one million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments?
Uh, again, Brian just asked me to come discuss the bid. Um, we opened bids for this two weeks ago as well. Received eight bids. Um, Holloway came in as the low, a fair bit lower than anybody else, but they feel comfortable that they're bid yet. Um, Holloway's done work for the county on numerous other projects in the past, so we're comfortable proceeding with them.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Item K is action to approve applying for a South Dakota Department of Health Office of Public Health preparedness and response points of dispensing pod grant. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
To approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Comments?
Yes, this is a yearly grant depending upon federal dollars that's available from the state of South Dakota Department of Health to assist our points of dispensing. We call it the Pandemic Planning Coordinating Committee slash Pod Committee, and I typically work with that committee, and they give us a list of what they would like to spend money on, and, um, we make the application, but the application has to go through the county. That particular committee is run through my office, so all, all the budget for it comes through you guys, and we, we are requesting that we are allowed to apply for the grant.
Okay. Bob, is this a yearly, uh, deal or?
Yes, it, it, the funding always is flexible. Sometimes we've got money, sometimes we don't get money. The county does, is gracious enough to grant us a thousand dollars in our budget for this. And anything we get from the grant that we can apply, we try to supplement back to, to offset the county's expenditure for the pandemic coordinating committee.
Okay. Any other questions for Bob? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number L is action to declare items as surplus property to transfer, sell, or dispose of. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments?
Just one, one thing to note here. As you can see, several, uh, departments are doing some cleanup. Um, the finance office has several items that they want to just dispose of. It looks like some chairs, uh, some old, the poll book cases that we've had for a long time. Um, the, uh, county development office, uh, graciously took four of those black empty poll book cases off the hands, so thank you for that, Bob. Um, also, there's, the sheriff's department has another, uh, twenty-fourteen Ford Explorer that they would like to surplus, and will sell that via online. Um, the courthouse has like an, an oil tank with some motors and pumps, um, that we're gonna sell online, but because we've got a bidder who would like to, uh, have that for scrap and whatnot, so we'll put that online. And then if you recall at the last meeting, um, you approved a transfer. Uh, it was a twenty-thirteen Ford Explorer that came from the sheriff's office, and the equalization office was, uh, wanted to have that. However, uh, after taking it to the shop, I think it needed a few more repairs than what they were comfortable with. So, um, we're gonna just surplus that and sell that via online instead. So, other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carried. We'll go back to the scheduled agenda item for nine o'clock. Is, uh, action approved agreement number twenty-four dash sixty-eight, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Brookings Municipal Utilities in Aurora Township. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments?
Good morning. Chad Bachman with Brookings Utilities, uh, engineering supervisor. Um, I've got a application for occupying of the right-of-way in front of you guys. We, uh, I should have been in front of you guys about six months earlier when we were doing the design. My design team misidentified two-thirteen as a township road and not a county road. So about two weeks ago, Brian called me and we kind of visited, and he said, hey, you need to have occupancy permit in here, and so we got that straightened out. So we've held off construction through the road until we go through the process of getting the permit. Brian did share with me a lot of the concerns associated with, uh, possibly closing that road with the construction up on highway fourteen and, and the sewer project that's going on in Aurora. There's a lot of traffic that's using that gravel road that, uh, normally won't. So, um, what I did is with this application, I actually put together a little memo talking about the other coordination items that we will do. We'll coordinate with Shannon over in Aurora, Marty with regards to the traffic closures. Yep, right there it is. So, um, I, I think we've addressed a lot of Brian's concerns with closing that road. Um, this is to get our raw water treated, our raw water pipeline up to our new treatment plant. Um, that has been a project that has been in the works for about three years, and this, this project is phase four of five, so we're getting closer. So, do you guys have any questions on that permit?
No, I just see, uh, it is quite a large water main and, and the roadway. Uh, uh, you addressed all the, you know, the questions that were asked of you in the, um, maintaining the road afterwards for a short time till it settles and?
Yep, yep. We, this project also has a three-year warranty on it also, so any work that comes up within that warranty period will be taken care of, so.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming in.
You bet. Thank you, guys.
No other questions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten on the agenda is commission department director's report.
We have the July Veteran Service Officer numbers there in front of you. A hundred and seventy-seven veterans assisted, uh, fourteen DAV or beta rides were given, and then two outreach events were attended or held. Uh, we did as part of the finance officers' report.
there was the general fund surplus for July, 48%. That's well above the 10-year average of 30%. And again, we'll continue to watch that as we get to here and for possible designations. As part of my report, we received a notice from the city of Brookings for a public hearing on tax increment, District 16. That's on Tuesday, the August 27th, a week from today, 6:00 PM here in this room. We also received another FAA notice for that project in Ballot in Minnesota. Tower's going up, just kind of more for your information. And also, the county strategic plan is included with my report for you to review. We did review that as department heads back earlier this year. We made some edits then. As I reviewed it, there are no changes needed at this point, so kind of just more for your review at this time. And then upcoming dates, tomorrow, we do have the Resilient Communities Early Learners Initiative. That's at Mickelson Middle School from 7:30 to 11:00 tomorrow morning, if you plan to attend that. Labor Day offices will be closed here in a couple of Mondays on the second. And then Fall Convention, majority of us are heading out to Rapid City the 16th through the 8th, potentially, yeah, the 18th of September. Looking out a little bit further, we have Native American Day coming up on October 14th. Reminder that department head evaluations will be Tuesday, October 15th. We have a commission meeting that morning and then department head evals will be that afternoon. And then there is a chamber legislative business roundtable. I know I've heard from a couple of you that requires an RSVP. You want to be, yes, yes?
I am out.
Okay, Larry, yes, okay. And I know I'd heard from Ryan already, so, okay, I will RSVP for you for that. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Stacy, one question. So we're meeting on September, not the 17th, it's a commission, we're meeting the 24th, correct?
Correct, so we meet the 3rd, that first Tuesday, right after Labor Day. We have to meet then because of, that's required of provisional ballot. And then we will have a two-week break and then we will meet, I believe it's the 24th of September, I think that's the date. Because Fall Convention lands right in between there, we moved that back a date, back a Tuesday, so a little bit different for September.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, moving on, item number 11 is state's attorney's office report. Item number 12 is commissioner reports and discussion items, Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. On Tuesday, August 6th, I attended the VOGA National Night Out event. Thanks to the sheriff's department for putting that together. Great attendance, weather was good, great evening. On Thursday, August 8th, I attended the PPCC meeting at the Brookings Hospital that Bob talked about earlier. It was a good learning experience for me. On the 9th of August, on Friday, that evening, at the BCOAC, the Madera diversion meeting, had a good group of people there. Some of them didn't understand exactly what the project was, but it was good to get that information out and hopefully we can move forward with that project. On Tuesday, August 13th, we had the joint city, joint jurisdiction meeting at 5:30. Wednesday, August 14th, the joint powers board meeting at 8:30 that morning and then that afternoon, attended the 10-county meeting in Watertown. Good discussions with other fellow commissioners from other counties. That's my report, thank you.
Commissioner Bartley.
Thank you. On the 8th, I attended a fundraiser social from CDI, a little golf tournament, had a good time. I don't think we won, obviously not, but appreciate the participation from Dan and Stacy and Larry. They carried the team for us. On the 9th, I attended the Madera Sioux River diversion presentation and as Commissioner Vanderwall had stated, I think it answered a lot of questions for people about the size of the project, where the project was and what the cost might look like. So we'll have some decisions to make on that. On the 12th, had a Zoom meeting for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Policy Statement Committee met. We had about a three-hour meeting on Zoom. On the 13th, attended the joint city-county zoning planning for rezoning in the joint jurisdiction area. On the 14th and 15th, attended the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board Meeting, Resolutions Meeting in Chamberlain for two days. We got everything ready for the resolutions and policy changes for the state convention in September. On the 19th, last evening, we had the Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Board meeting. The construction project's moving along well. If you haven't driven by, go ahead and do so. See, this is a point where things go up in a hurry. You start putting some walls up and some wood and it looks like it's taking shape and then obviously we get it all enclosed, it slows down because all the work's done inside where you can't see it. So if you haven't driven by, go ahead and take a look at it. It's proceeding as planned at this point in time. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Commissioner Krogman.
Yeah, kind of like a couple of weeks for me. On 13th, I was at that joint city-county meeting and that's it.
Commissioner Hostler.
Yeah, on the 13th, I also attended that joint county-city meeting. On the 14th, here, we had the joint powers board meeting, had some updates on, some updates on in the building and the generator and things like that. And then that afternoon, again, the 10-county meeting up in Watertown. And then on the 15th, I attended the conservation district tour. Got to drive around the county and see the efforts from local farmers and landowners for their conservation efforts in the county, which is very nice to see. That is my report.
Thank you. On the 7th, I had a conservation district meeting. On the 8th, I also participated in the CDI outing with Commissioner Bartley and Stacy and Dan. On the 9th, had a Madera drainage meeting. It was pretty well-attended and people were willing to share their concerns and that's well-noted. We'll be reviewing that here shortly. Bob will be scheduling a meeting. On the 13th, attended the joint zoning meeting with the city. On the 14th, went up to Watertown with the 10-county meeting. It was a good meeting. And on the 15th, I attended the conservation district tour for a short time, then I did have to leave early. That ends my report. Moving on to item number 13 is executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses 1 and 3, personnel and consulting with legal counsel. Do I have a motion to enter an executive session?
So moved, second.
Have a motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried.